I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Mr. Lemay? Mr. Naco? Mr. Sheehan?
Yep.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Getche?
Here. Do we have anybody registered for public appearance?
No names.
No names. Do we have any school committee communications? The report of the student representative, I'd like to take a moment to congratulate. Student Rep. Nellie Chan graduated in June 2nd, wish her well. The members have a copy of a report to read through when they have a moment. Can I get an approval, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from May 18th?
So moved.
So moved.
Mr. Warren?
Yes, here.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes. Can I also get a motion to approve the minutes from the special school committee meeting held on May 25th?
Second.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes. Can I get a motion to waive the reading of the warrants?
Motion to waive the reading.
Second. Matt?
Sure.
Thanks.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the expenditure of $8,866,252.71?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes. Do you have a question down at the shoe bin cabinet?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on my agenda, I'll be seeking approval to accept two separate donations on behalf of Daisy Delgado in memory of her son, who was a former graduate of Great Lowell Technical High School and a student in the automotive technology program. The first approval is to accept an individual donation of $250 from Mr. and Mrs. DiMartino, and the second is to approve a donation of $1,000 from AAA Northeast Charitable Fund at the Rhode Island Foundation, both on behalf of employee Daisy Delgado. A copy of the donation letter is in your packet. So we're looking for two separate approvals.
Can we get a motion for the Mr. and Mrs. DiMartino donation?
Both to approve.
Second.
Both to accept.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson? Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
I just want to take a moment to thank Mrs. Delgado for her continued support and to the donors. These funds will be utilized by our Students Assistance Fund in order to purchase uniforms of incoming students who are in need, those students in the automotive technology program. That was a specific request of the family. The next item? Second donation, I'm sorry.
Can I get a motion for the second donation from AAA?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on my agenda is the Cooperative Education Report. A copy of that report is also in your package. The May report you provided indicates a total of 92 junior students on co-op, representing 17% of the class of 2024, participating in co-op. Again, I'd like to thank Stacy Bazanson for her continued work to provide our students with this great opportunity. The next item on my agenda, I'm asking the committee's approval for the proposed School Resource Officer Memorandum of Agreement. There was nothing new to this memorandum of agreement. We just have to review it every year.
Do we have a motion to approve the SRO MOU?
Order.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Naco? Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
I'd also like to thank Chief Howe and the Tinsborough Police Department for their ongoing partnership. We appreciate our school resource officers, Sergeant Malanson and Officer Cocosial and all the hard work they do to ensure that our school is safe. So I'd just like to extend my appreciation to them. The next item on my agenda, I'm going to invite our Assistant Superintendent Principal, Mr. Michael Barton, up to present several things tonight. He's going to be presenting our 23-24 Student Handbook, the 23-24 School Improvement Plan, the 23-24 Medical and Behavioral Emergency Plan, and Mr. Barton is going to explain. I think we're going to hold on that plan tonight because we were just informed by the Department of Education that there are some new guidelines to follow, and that came to us this week. And our Technical Program Service Catalog, all which need approval. And in addition, he's going to be asking, talking about out-of-state travel. Would you like to? And maybe you can go, however you would like to start.
Do you have any light, Mike? Which one you want to do first?
Maybe you want to do the out-of-state travel first.
So, as you know, we had an emergency school committee meeting recently in order to approve a unique opportunity to travel to Oregon for our track and field athletes. We have an additional unique opportunity that we're seeking your approval this evening, but we also have a modification to that trip to Oregon. So I invited Coach Stein to give you a brief synopsis of that change to the trip to Oregon to describe to you why there was some modification.
So the original trip to Oregon, we had three junior athletes this year of the track team that qualified for national events. One was a two-mile, that was Devon Moreau from Tinsborough. Dennis Mowat, DJ, was the shot put, he's from Lowell at Drakeett, and then Joyce Phillip is all juniors from, and she's from Drakeett. And so when we got the approval from Mike, that you guys had said it was okay to do the expenditure, when we went to go to register the kids, unfortunately, because it's a national event, two out of the three events, so the event for Joyce and the event for DJ, or Dennis, I'm sorry, were full, they closed them. So it only left the two-mile race for Devon Moreau open. So we looked, there's other national races, this one happens to be the Nike one, but Adidas runs one, and so does New Balance. And when we looked at the other races to see if we could maybe either shift the kids to all one race or whatever, it turned out that the only other race that was available was Adidas, which happens to be in Greensboro, North Carolina, and that's the long jump. So we could get Joyce in the long jump. So I approached Mike, explained him the situation. We started to look at all the numbers, and basically it was still within the range of what you guys had approved for the initial expenditure to go to Oregon. Unfortunately, Dennis was not allowed to go to either, even though I petitioned Nike on his behalf twice to say, hey, could you reopen it and let us get this one kid in so he gets the experience to get out there too? But they wouldn't, once it was closed, I like, we're sorry, we can't reopen it, it's closed. So Mike had told me to, you know, go ahead and forward, get the bookings done, get the travel arrangements done, so we started processing all that stuff. So this morning, Devon Moreau and two coaches flew out to Oregon to the Hayward Field at the University of Oregon in Eugene, and then tomorrow morning, Joyce and two coaches will be flying down to Greensboro, North Carolina to compete the Adidas Nationals.
So the modification for the trip to Oregon is a reduction in expenditure.
Right.
Originally, it was $9,375. As a result of the changes, it's $7,774.46. And then the trip to Greensboro, North Carolina is $4,611.41, which includes airfare, flights, transportation, hotel, car rental, meals, and the admission fee to the event. So we're seeking your approval for the trip to Oregon as a modification and the approval to the event in Greensboro, North Carolina.
So let me, I just got a couple of questions. Is there any application fees so this doesn't happen again next time without our approval? If you throw in, say there's three kids, I'm just speaking for me, I don't want to speak for the board.
So let me explain.
Just so we don't get hit with it again?
Yeah, so let me explain how kind of all works. So for indoor track, for instance, the Nationals for indoor are done in Boston. So it's, and what I, we talked to Mike about this, is that, and I talked to Mark White about it too, is that as the kids become eligible for the national events, if possible, what we would like to see happen is just have, say, yes, register them, and then we'll look at the funding, so at least we can get them in and registered. And the fees in Boston or the national ones, they range from $45 to $55 per athlete.
It makes it better.
So if we know going into our seasons, as soon as athletes are eligible, then I go to Mike or Mark White and say, hey, I've got this kid, he's eligible, it's okay to register, yes, get him registered, at least we hold the spot. Because we can, like the Nike National, they'll hold the spot for the kid up till a week ahead, and then you have to pay with a credit card. So at least we have the slot there, and then if for some reason we can't get the funding or the kid has to fundraise or whatever, we can figure that part out after. But at least we hold the spots moving forward. So when we go to the kids and say, hey, can you check to see if it's okay with your parents, we don't lose time waiting for approvals from you guys, because I know you only meet once a month, and Jill and Mike made an emergency exception last time, but by the time that I kind of all came together, it was a little, we missed the window, that was the problem.
Now, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd rather have all the applications, I'd rather lose $50 than looking down at it, and I'm going to vote yes on it anyway. The original was $9,300, now we're up to $11,000.
Right, yeah.
I'd rather lose 200 than pay an extra $2,000.
Sure.
So, I mean, I'm going to vote for it, but just going forward, put the applications in so we have the spot.
Yeah, as long as we, well, I'll talk to Mike about that as, you know, and get something.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Ralph.
Mr. Chairman, forty of fifty dollars, wouldn't that money be available in the budget to spend that and make the commitment?
Yeah, that's, yeah. We're relatively new to doing this, so this is really, it started last year, and we kind of, you know, that's why I'm asking the question. So, yeah, the money will be there for the applications, that's the part I'm not worried about. It's the spots, and I know what Butch went through to get the spots, and that's why I asked that question. I'll let Mike finish it up.
Yeah, no, I would just say I'd thank the committee for their understanding and their patience as we navigate these national tournaments that are out of state, and they have some complexity to them in terms of their requirements and their registration processes. But I think the great thing is we have a stellar track team, stellar cross-country team that's growing and growing, and we have students that are competing on a national level, and, you know, they're becoming eligible for Division One, Division Two, and Division Three level performance. So, you know, it's really a stellar thing, but with that comes some unique opportunities that we're learning to navigate.
Right.
So what I'm hearing is that student becomes eligible, once they become eligible, we say we'd like to go ahead and put that, you know, register that student. We don't really have to pay for anything, because the student at that point goes home, says, Mom and Dad, can I go? Do we have to pay for that placeholder, or do we have to pay?
Well, so for instance, yeah, no, so for instance, right now, when you do the registration for the indoor one, when you register, you have to pay it right away. When you do the Nike one, for instance, this Nike one, when you register, they'll hold the spot up to a week out, so we had to pay by last Monday. So at that point, I just paid with my credit card, just to make sure I was holding his spot, because we didn't want to waste any more time. But, so again, it depends on which event we send him to. So sometimes you have to pay upfront. Yeah, sometimes you have to pay upfront, and sometimes they'll hold it for you up until a week before the event. So if a week before it comes through, we say, oh, we're not going to be able to do it, then I can retract the entry, and there's, nothing's been charged to my credit card or the school credit card, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
And finally, what I'm hearing is that three kids were eligible to go to Oregon.
Yeah, yeah.
One ended up going.
One ended up going to Oregon, yes.
One is going to Greensboro.
That's Joyce, yes.
As long as he approved.
Yep.
And then the third one is.
He's, unfortunately, he was left out.
He's not going to be able to.
Yep, unfortunately. And I've talked to, you know, talked to him and his mother and, you know, apologized, you know, that it was just, again, like Mike said, it's kind of, it's an unfortunate fortunate thing for us that it's kind of a learning curve, because as we've been working on this program since I've been coaching, the last five years, we've just seen incremental growth between the number of athletes, like this year's spring track team, we had 102 kids on it, so. And, you know, Joyce broke two records this year, Devon broke two records this year, DJ's on the verge of breaking a record next year, so, I mean, they're all great kids, they're all working hard, they're all A students, they're all, I mean, so it's a real benefit to the school, gives us some national notoriety. I mean, Albert Ferraris went Division One last year, Devon is on a verbal with a Division One school for, after he graduates, and chances are Joyce and DJ will both get scholarships somewhat too, so.
Well, it's quick for the students to get recognized, and it's also a great opportunity for them to get some real experience.
And the other thing too, is it puts them in this thing called athletic.net, which is a national database that, so as they're going through these things, like, we had nine athletes get all the way to state this year, and we had three athletes get to the New England's this year. So all that data gets tracked in this online network, so colleges from all over the country can start to recognize us as a, you know.
A outstanding school district.
Yeah, I mean, the only other school that is at our level and right now is Great Lawrence. That's it, they're the only other ones that are going, you know, as far as we are, so. From the technical schools, I should say, there's not anybody else doing what we're doing right now.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, no problem, no worries.
I'm surprised, I was just wondering, have you had any problems with the airlines at all, with all the problems that have been happening?
No, I mean, knock, no, I mean, knock on wood, this morning, we had the first two, first three left this morning, they landed on, they left on time, they landed on time, they texted me, yep, we got here, no issues.
That's good.
The other ones are leaving tomorrow, and, you know, at 9:40, they leave from here, and I expect that they shouldn't have.
There's a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, I mean, knock, knock on wood.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, that's good.
Yeah, no, we didn't have trouble booking the flights or anything, we had to make a change to one of the flights. That went, that went just, went fine.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah.
Glad we can help.
Yep.
So, do we get a motion for the revised out-of-state travel for Oregon? Have a second?
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan? Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes. Can I have another motion for out-of-state travel for the track and field Nationals to Carolina?
Approve.
Second.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Stein, it's coming, appreciate it, thank you.
It's called clear work, Joe.
Thank you very much. Have a great summer. Okay, the next item, if we can go back in order, is the 2023-2024 changes to the student handbook. I can go run through them, you have in your packets, the red changes that are struck out, and then the red changes that are underlined. Just to go through them, excuse me. Basically, there's some language changes in terms of changes in title of personnel or locations within the building, and certainly the updated new members of the school committee. There's some gender pronouns that have been changed to they and their and them to keep current with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, Education, Communications. The changes that are in the MCAS requirements are updated as well. The previous student handbook had the COVID requirements that had been modified, these are now coming out of COVID, and they have the requirements for ELA math and science earning scores for the classes of 2024 and all the way up to 2020, 31, and beyond. The John and Abigail Adams scholarships have changed, there's no changes to the requirements of the scholarships or the college scholarships, they're just more streamlined in the way that the state is delivering the information. If you're looking with me on page seven, on section, page 31, we have had some concerns about students bringing in personal computers, laptops, tablets, and using personal hotspots. And a hotspot, if you're unfamiliar with it, is to, is a device that generates internet activity on its own. So that had already been in the Internet Technology Acceptable Use Plan that we have in the building. However, I decided, or we decided to update the student handbook so it reflects what's already in the acceptable use policy in here, so that students are not bringing in their own personal devices and their own personal Wi-Fi, because if they do that, they can avoid being on the school's network, and therefore they can communicate without any of the filtering systems that are on our network, so we really don't want that happening in our school district. So the personal devices and the hotspots are not permitted, are not, they're prohibited. Language is already in there, but I chose to reinforce it in the student handbook. I met with the cooperative, Stacy Bazanson, the Cooperative Education Director. The above paragraph, which is struck out, provided the same information, but we put it in a more cohesive and comprehensible manner regarding co-op opportunities. And really, there, the key point here is that there's three main ways students can solicit co-op opportunities. They can, the co-op office obviously works with employers to solicit new positions, and they work with the employers that we have a relationship with currently, and then the co-op office can solicit recommendations from technical instructors. The second way is the technical instructors, who have contacts in the field, can contact the co-op office and say, we have people or an agency or a firm or where have you that is interested in co-op. And same thing with other members of the school community can certainly do that. And then the third way is students can solicit their own co-op opportunity, that happens quite frequently, and they'll go to Ms. Bazanson, and then Ms. Bazanson will go through the necessary steps to ensure that the co-op employer is suitable and meets all of our and our state requirements. So that is really streamlined, so it's just more understandable for all students to be able to read. Additionally, very rarely do we have a student who has an academic course such as a math prep course or a ELA prep course on their academic week, and sometimes that prohibits them from going out on co-op, because they have to take that course in order to graduate. However, typically through some creative scheduling, we've been able to avoid that, so kids can still get the diploma, make the, take the support courses, and then go out on cooperative education. That language was never in there, so it's in there. But I think, speaking to Ms. Bazanson, the school has done its best to creatively schedule so that students can take advantage of these co-op opportunities, as well as taking the support courses to get their diploma through, meeting the MCAS requirements. And then, lastly, there's just some language changes to the Homework Assistance and Tutoring Center, which is just locations and times when things start. So those are the main changes to the student handbook for this school year, school year to be set for upcoming school year. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mike?
No.
I have a question, Mike.
Sure.
Page two, option one, just trying to understand, classes of 22, 24, and 25, and then classes of 26 to 2030. Now, what I'm understanding with these in option one is that the student must score this grade in ELA, a 472 or higher, to be considered passing the MCAS test, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Got you. So, and then as time progresses, they're becoming a little bit more stringent.
Correct.
And that's because of the pandemic and no really in-person running. Okay, I just really want that to understand. And then option two, was it looks like they have, what, an educational plan?
Exactly, yeah, so if someone is not at that level, that's when you have an EPP with support courses that we described. They can take support courses, or they can have a plan, and they meet that plan by passing their English classes and their science classes, their math classes as they progress through school.
So is that based on the instructors saying, yes, they've met these needs?
The guidance counselors put together the EPPs, and then the grades they get fulfill those requirements. And if their scores were lower or in jeopardy, we would offer them a support course or enroll them in a support course.
And then take the test?
Correct, yeah, they can take the test multiple times.
They can take, not in the same year?
Yeah, they can take it multiple times in the same year. The biology course is offered in February and June, so they could do that, and they can take retests as well.
They give, they give an ample opportunity.
They, they are, yep, so if you take the test your freshman year, typically freshmen who are taking the test are taking a science test, and if you're taking it as a freshman, the likelihood of you scoring a passing grade is very strong. If you're taking it as a sophomore, and you don't score this grade, you have your time in junior year, in February and June to take it, as well as your senior year. Same thing with ELA, if you don't, you take it in your sophomore year, and same thing with math, you get it in your sophomore year, and then you have opportunities to retake it by the time you graduate. And if, in circumstances where students don't achieve a passing score, we have done appeals through the state of Massachusetts, so we do what's called a cohort appeal, where we take the courses that student took, and then we compare them with students who did pass and didn't pass by looking at their grades. So it's a little bit of kind of paperwork, but we've done that several times, and it's been successful more than it's not.
It helps students graduate.
Absolutely, yeah.
Seems very beneficial, so.
Yeah, yep, we do them every year, and we have had success with them. I can't say all the time, because they also look at attendance in that as well.
But it's a lot of work.
It's a considerable amount of work, but I wouldn't say it's, I'd say it's worth it.
Sure.
Do you get any feedback from, like, parents and?
There, I think, I think when, I think, yeah, I can, well, I can speak, having done that in the previous position I was in, the curriculum director, yeah, teachers are related, students are related. Teachers also recommend, there's another recommendation piece to that in the cohort appeal, where the teacher, on record, the teacher who had the student, can recommend that the board consider the appeal. So the short answer, Mr. Lemay, is yes, they're happy and enthusiastic.
People on both sides are bending over to try and help them.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, we're going to do everything we can for our students. Yep.
In this class of 2024 and 2025 rubrics is realistically current, juniors and seniors, right? Kids are going to be junior this upcoming year or senior this upcoming year, these are the goals that they have to meet in order to graduate.
Correct, yep.
Okay, great, thanks for clarifying, that's my only question.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Can I get a motion to approve the 2023-2024 student handbook? Have a second?
So the next item is the, I'm sorry, pardon me.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is the School Improvement Plan. So annually, by law, the all school districts are required to put together a school improvement plan. The School Improvement Planning Committee is, or rather, the school council is made up of community members, parents, students, myself and teachers. So there's a school council, which you can see the, the members on the left side. And on the right side, there's a School Improvement Planning Committee, which is made up of members of the school instructional leadership team, as well as teachers who are on the, who are interested and who, who volunteer to be part of it. So it's really my job to take these two groups of people and work with them from October, November, all the way to currently, to develop an improvement plan. And that starts with looking at the previous improvement plan to look at what should remain. Have we met our goals? Have we met the objectives and deciding whether or not they've been met? And should they continue or should they not? Should they, should they remain or not remain? So this year, turning to the first goal, the driving force of this policy includes academic and technical achievement, social emotional learning, a number of different topics. The first goal is to provide engaging, rigorous, equitable, hands-on, real-world learning opportunities. The objectives within that include some of the work that we've done in the past and some enhancements to the work we've done or are going to be doing. That deals with project-based learning. The school has luckily been awarded an opportunity for the second year in a row to work with project-based learning institutes in order to train over a hundred and ten teachers, academic and technical teachers, in project-based learning. What that basically is, is the opportunity to look at how the academic curriculum, academic and technical curriculum can develop learning opportunities around projects, presentations, public speaking, displays of learning, both in the academic and technical fields. And to look at like, what are those good qualities? What does a good project look like? What does a good presentation look like? How, what does it mean to be a good public speaker? What does it mean to be, ask good questions? So fifty teachers were trained last year. Fifty-six more teachers are going to be trained next week in this. The great thing about it is it really emphasizes showcases of learning. So new this year, we had a cultural fair where people, students who had been exposed to some of this project-based learning, displayed their learning in the mall area. So they did some work on abolitionism, they did some work on their cultures. So the skills that these teachers are learning are being translated into public displays of learning during the school day. And kids are coming through the mall area to see each other's work, to ask questions, to, to really just sort of be more engaged, more connected with the learning. We also did a mental health information systems fair based on this work, where students created video games and information systems. In the mall area, they displayed them and the video games were based on mental health questions, mental health scenarios. So all of that is being generated out of this. Same thing with our annual science fair. I know many of you have come to that and it's, it's really a fun day. It's really a great display of learning. A lot of, number one, we had more participants this year, which is great. And then the quality, I think, of the presentations was a little bit stronger because you could see the work reflected in the science fair. So that's, that's really the first opportunity in standard one to, to look at that. Secondly to that is the, our ongoing work with literacy in the building in order to provide literacy, language instruction in all aspects of the school culture. Essentially, I would, I would describe it as no longer is someone just a sci, I should never say just, but no longer is a person a science teacher or a technical teacher. You have to be a teacher of language too, because so many of our students are coming to us with language needs. Either they, they have disabilities or their first language is in English. So language instruction has to be everywhere, right? It can't just be in English class. It needs to be in a multiple different classes, but with that comes a lot of training. The school has a strong history of that. I think for a while it, it may have slowed a little bit, so we're looking to resurrect that so that more people feel comfortable reading articles, developing resumes, looking at cover letters, knowing how to formulate an email in all aspects of the, of the curriculum. So it's just sort of, so that's, that's goal number one. Goal number two is, again, a really important one and that has to do with grading. Primarily to look at the different types of tests we give kids, as well as the weighting of those tests. One of the most interesting things, I think for me, being maybe a little bit of a grading nerd, is we have midterms and finals every year. And we did some surveys this year and we asked, "Do you want to have midterms and finals?" And everybody, including the student body, said, "Yes, we want to have midterms and finals," which is kind of hard to believe, but that's a plus. But they also all said, "We think the weight is too much." And that's fifteen percent of your grade when you have your midterm and final. So that works two ways. Either you're, you might have not done so well, but you're a good test taker and that fifteen percent can boost your grade. Or you might have done well at everything else in the class and then you go to take the midterm and you're not a great test taker and that fifteen percent can sink you. So essentially, this priority looks at reviewing the weight of those grades, the weight of those exams and the makeup of them. So that's, it's a pretty big task because it's just a lot. So there's a grading and assessment committee made up of teachers that are, that are going to tackle that. Any questions before I keep on going? I don't want to keep on. Okay. All right, and then our goal number three is another one that I think is, well, for me, they're kind of all interesting, but this one's really interesting. As you know, we've had a number of students who have been involved in leadership activities throughout the building. That really started in the summer project. We had a teacher working with students to give tours throughout the building. She did a considerable amount of training on how to publicly speak, how to run tours for the incoming eighth graders. How do you use your body language? How do you speak? How do you project your voice? She did really comprehensive training and we had about fifteen or so student leaders. Now, now we have over like fifty-five of kids who have signed on. That's really taken off in the building. So we've done a considerable amount of summer training that has carried on through the year. They've done a number of trainings and, and information about spreading messages of a lack of hate throughout the building. They've worked with the number of facilities throughout, or number of institutes throughout the country so that they spread the message of community, well-being, welcoming, welcomeness, rather than messages of discrimination or hate. So these leaders have, have continued to really build on this. And with that is just the opportunity to, to train them, to provide greater exposure for them. One of the things that we're looking at, and I think it will happen, is taking these leaders and pairing them up with a teacher for the October in-service, which will be devoted toward another topic that's really important here is racial discrimination, gender discrimination, disability discrimination and, and sexual orientation discrimination. Unfortunately, there's been some instances where there's some inappropriate language being used in the hallways, inappropriate language being used in the classroom. Some instances, many instances where we, we can't accept that. We can't accept that as a school and a community. It's contrary to our core values. It's contrary, I think, to who we want to represent ourselves. So I'm looking to take these student leaders and pair them with instructors so that they can work together to have a conversation about how we can work as a school to prevent this discrimination in these unfortunate instances where there's some inappropriate language being used in hallways and classrooms. So that's really the, the thrust of the student leaders. Speak, met with them many times and they're very enthusiastic about those topics. And then lastly, it's a continuation of the mental health needs in the building. We've come before you, speaking to you several times during the course of the last two years about the increase of mental health needs in the school community regarding anxiety, regard, regarding grief, regarding coping skills and substance abuse that manifests themselves in students in crisis. So that's, there's a social emotional learning committee. They have, they're going to be doing the first in-service in September, which will be devoted to de-escalation strategies. So when a student is heightened emotionally, sometimes that manifests itself in different ways, right? Through depression, through anger, through different ways. The staff has asked through professional development and through surveys, you know, "Can you give us more resources to, to help these students? Can you give us more resources to, to, to react to these students in the appropriate way?" So the last goal is to continue that work, which is needed throughout the district. Okay, so that's the school improvement plan. That's been created through the input of those different parties I've described throughout the school community.
Anybody have any questions?
I just want to make one comment. I mean, that was very technical and detailed and I really appreciated it. And I'm sure the body did as well because it just shows you the direction this, this school's going and we're all happy to see that.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So the next one, I'm looking at the table until August, superintendent mentioned. So we have our annual medical and behavioral health emergency response plan. I worked with a number of parties throughout the building, including the superintendent, to make revisions to this. We did so based on our own institutional knowledge and the recommendations of the state at the time. Last week, the state sent an email that was quite comprehensive, that gives guidelines. So I just think it's wise to table it until I have a chance to look at the guidelines and match it up with this to see, make sure everything makes sense. Otherwise, I might have to bring it to you twice.
I have a motion to table the medical behavior health.
Second. Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan? Mr. Hogan?
Ralph.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the last item that I am responsible for is the changes to the Technical Program Service Catalog. So we have a Technical Program Service Catalog that is here on paper and it also mirrors what's on our school's website. The Technical Program Service Catalog provides the services the school offers through the four CTE clusters and it provides an overview of what services the general public can acquire from us. There are some changes in this that I want to, that I, I feel I need to go over with you. The first language is that the automotive technology department is looking to service or maintenance vehicles that are ten years old or newer. They will take into consideration vehicles that are older than ten years, but they're looking to keep students current with the latest models and the latest, the latest automotive design. So that's one thing that they're looking to, to put in there. Obviously, they'll consider older vehicles on a, on a case-by-case basis. The other information that's in here is the general statement that goes through here in terms of ma, the artisan restaurant, as well as the function room, as well as the cosmetology area or technical program, that prices do fluctuate. They're seeing a considerable change in prices in terms of food prices, in terms of cosmetic prices and cosmetology resources. So we're adding the starting prices for cosmetology services, haircut, shampoo, foils, things of that nature, with the idea that this is your starting price and then it may or may not go up based on fluctuation. So that's included there. In the culinary restaurant, rather than artisan restaurant than the cafe, prior to this, there was a statement in there that said that twenty percent, a twenty percent increase would be tacked on to the cost of an item, as well as the services to rent the function, the function hall or the artisan function room. That is included in the price of the meal or the rental facility. So that is a clarification that I think needs, that, that needs to be put in there, that the cost is included in the meal, in the price of the meal, as well as the cost of renting the function hall. Conversely, in the automotive area, when you get your vehicle repaired, they don't have the equipment and the parts in stock. They'll acquire them from outside, order them, and then you'll get an itemized list of how much your parts were and then twenty percent is added to that. So there's two different, two different ways of, of identifying the twenty percent. That's included in all fees throughout the district. In addition, the school, you folks had already approved the seventy-five dollar non-refundable enrollment fee, which is included or applied to the first month's tuition. That language is in there. You had approved that. And then there's just some cleanup in terms of the graphic communication requests. And there was some redundancy in it. Now, there's no longer redundancy. And that's, all of the graphics opportunities are in here as well. And obviously, those prices may fluctuate due to the cost of repairing equipment and then ink and paper and materials. So those are the main changes to the technical service catalog.
Anybody have any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the Technical Program Service Catalog?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So with that said, that is the end of my report. But before I go and close, I'd just like to say that as we come to the end of the school year, I'd like to recognize and thank first and foremost Mr. Barton for doing an incredible job with developing the school improvement plan and leading the administrative team this year. Thank you, Mr. Barton. I'd like to thank the teachers and the counselors and our school nurses and all of our school staff for their hard work they do throughout the school year to make it a welcoming, accepting and safe place for our students to learn and grow. So I'd also like to thank our families for their partnership. We appreciate that and we hope that that continues as their students remain here for their high school education. And lastly, I'd like to thank all of you as a committee for your support throughout the year, keeping students at the forefront of your decisions. And I hope that we can move forward and continue to do that for our school community. So thank you all. And that's the end of my report tonight.
Thank you, Joe. Great job this year.
Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you. And congratulations on another successful school year.
Yeah, thank you.
My report of business manager, Mike, you're up.
All right. The first item I have on my agenda tonight is the acceptance of a dishwasher donation. The culinary arts program has been working with the Merrimack Valley Food Bank throughout the year on a couple of different grant programs, expanding access to education for cooking, after-school and a number of other items. Through this process, there was some grant funding left over at the end of the year through the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. So they asked if there was anything that the school needed for program equipment. And while we've renovated almost the entirety of the cafe, we did have an old dishwasher in there that was in need of repair, actually. So when they reached out, we let them know about the dishwasher and they said they'd be able to purchase that for us and donate it to the school. The dishwasher has a value of roughly fourteen thousand dollars. And where it is a replacement, there won't be much additional work outside of that other than removing the old one and swapping in a new one. So I'll need a motion to accept the donation of a dishwasher from the Merrimack Valley Food Bank.
Can I get a motion to approve the dishwasher donation? Second.
Second.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
All right, the next item on my agenda is a lengthy list of transfers. I'm doing my, I'm trying to get ahead of my account cleanup for the end of the year here. So we have a list in front of you here that's, that's quite long. The total's to two million, one hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and one cents. If there are any questions on any, feel free.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheehan?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Getchere?
Yes.
All right, and my final item tonight is an update on our building addition project. The building addition project had a little bit of a conflict in the old plans for the site layout of Greater Wall Tech. And then when we had a new surveying company come in to look at the plans for the new building placement, in which the elevations didn't match. So the new elevation shows that that area that we were going to use over our basketball court is actually in the floodplain, which required that we come up with compensatory storage for the floodwater that will be displaced by the new building. So we looked at locations around the campus.